Call the meeting to order and please rise for Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless.
Okay. Number two on the agenda is fire evacuation. If a fire alarm should go off, you can exit to your rear, to my left, to your right. Just get a safe distance away from the building. Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Mr. Chair, Terrence Lynch.
Here.
Lynda DeGray.
Here.
John Petronella is here. Frances Alamo.
Here.
Joseph Muley.
Here.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Here.
Vinnie Gorillo.
Here.
Christian D'Antonio.
Here.
Patrick Hooper is absent. And Walter Crizell.
Here.
Okay, approval of minutes from April 11th, 2024.
I make a motion to approve the April 11th, 2024 minutes.
Any discussion, changes, amendments?
Second.
Second?
I second him.
All in favor, raise your hands to approve. John, I'll let you catch up.
I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining? Okay. One abstention, Commissioner Cozal. Next on the agenda is the town attorney's report. I think we have it here. We have a zoning enforcement.
I don't think we have.
Don't think we have it. Laurie, there's no town attorney report tonight?
No, you only get that once a month.
Okay.
Okay.
So, next, zoning enforcement officers' report. And this evening, we have Rick here with us. Rick?
Good evening. Yeah, before you have a report from, it runs from September through the present. On the top, you'll see signs and banners. During that time period, there were 29 banners and signs issued and zoning permits, 44 of them. That does not count, though, the building permits that were approved through the software. There's numerous approvals that we do for building permits. There's three pages here of different violations. If you'd like to run through them, take a look at them. If you have any questions on them, any of them. And I have some photographs that we can take a look at for some of the violations.
Is there any particular that you want to bring our attention to?
Well, the first one there, 83 First Avenue, that was cease and desist. That was the diversion of Grape Brook. I'm not sure if you're aware of it or not.
I was aware. I watched it on Wetlands. That would be one I'd like to see.
So, besides the diversion, there was, he was also cited for a junkyard. That used to be Grape Brook. That is a sewer manhole cover. The water level at the time when it was operating, or when the brook was running through there, was a couple of feet from the top of it. Because of the damming of the brook in that area, obviously, the water level has dropped quite a bit. That's part of the area that was dammed up. Just concrete and dirt materials that were placed there. There's some barrels down over here. They were, not really sure what the barrels are. At one side, it says resin in, the other says resin out, so it was some sort of processing barrel of some sort. There's a better look at the barrels that were there in the, that's the older portion of the brook. He was running a pump up to the property up on top. Right up there, you'll see a fenced-in area. There's probably 30 ducks and chickens and not sure what else up there. And let's see. So, this is from 2020. You'll see that this was the main course of the brook running down. Over to the left here is Route 91. This culvert was, there was a proposal into expand that culvert. It's been going on for a couple of years with deep, and that's on hold right now because of the situation. You'll see where it was dammed up here and a section here. And the brook is now diverted down around this way and goes in over here. And part of the problem with this also is the water's backing up further to the east in the residential sections. And that's a, from 2022. You'll see some other activity up in here also, but it's, it's a major issue. So, deep is involved with this also. They've issued a violation out of that office, which includes the property owner at 83 to come up with a engineering program to get the problem fixed. And I'm not sure how far they're going to get with him doing that at this point in time.
What does that do to the culvert project?
It's, it's on hold right now.
Is it on, will we, do we stand to lose that? Because that would be...
No, not necessarily. It's, it's just that it's on hold because of this diversion.
Yeah. Now, is there a way that you're going to be moving forward to resolve this? Because I did watch it on Wetlands, and he seemed like he didn't know anything. That's kind of, I got from him. He was like, I don't know.
Well, like I said, there's going to be more pressure from deep than there is from us, actually, at this point in time. And there's also, with some of this activity, he actually broke, we think because of the activity with the backhoe, he broke a sewer line that runs down from First Avenue, Second Avenue, that feeds in. There's a major, that first, I can't see it here. That, that first picture that I showed you of the manhole sticking out of the water, that comes down from the Sherwood neighborhood. That's a main trunk line for sewage. And the one out of First Avenue runs into that, but it's collapsed, not completely collapsed, but it's broken into spots.
Just to put it out there, this might be something that's not in your purview. If it becomes emergent, can the town get in there and just hire contractors and fix this and then lean the property? I mean, that'd probably be a town council thing, but this could be a huge problem, especially upstream.
It's my understanding, water pollution control is moving forward with, there's a 20-foot right-of-way or easement to get down to these manholes. There's one right about, right about here. There's another one over here, and that other one is right here, but there's another one, I think, maybe right there. So, there's only a 20-foot easement coming in here, but they're going to need more room than that to fix the problem. And it's those older type pipes that, once they start cutting them, they start breaking further and further. They're old.
It's a problem.
So, that's kind of where it stands right now.
We haven't gotten any flooding reported from residents upstream?
No, but we've had, we looked at other pictures further to the east where you can see that the water has backed up a little bit. The stream, it looks like there's more ponding as you move further to the east.
Thank God, we've had some heavy rain. Okay, anybody have any questions for Rick? Feel free. And on this, or on this first, and then if there's anything else you see on his report you want to ask him about, feel free.
Sure.
Yeah, Rick, could you elaborate on the 147 Abbey Road property?
Okay.
Just a little bit?
I actually have some pictures here of that, too. That's actually in litigation right now.
Okay.
It was appealed. You'll see here, this is a blue line. This is approximately where the old farming pond, irrigation pond was. And it's been expanded over, further to the east. That's how it was before. It was over in this area here originally, and they expanded and dug out over here. And with the excavation, they seem to think their point is that it's farming, part of farming. The problem is, even in the farming state statute, it does refer to zoning regulations. And we do have an excavation section in our regulations that anything over 600 cubic yards, they need a special permit for. This is well over the 600 cubic yards. It's probably about, I think they said 16 feet deep. So, between being that deep and the amount of area, you can see, and there's also a, I think it's 40 feet from a property line, where you're not supposed to have any excavation. That's, that's probably about 12 or 15 feet where they did the excavation work.
Is there any safety fencing? I don't see that for children. It may fall in there or 16 feet deep?
Well, it is, it is, it is their property.
It's their property.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't even know if they have it posted, no trespassing or anything like that, but there's no requirement that they put a fence around it. They went before ZBA. ZBA requested that they put up fencing. I think they put up the orange safety fence.
Yep.
And I don't think that's up any.
So, we have a, you have to fence in your pool to our regulations, right? Which, not a pond 16 feet deep.
So, this is, this is with some recent rain. You'll see that the, the difference between, no, it's, the flag's in the way. I just can't see. You see how low the pond is there? And then if we go to, this was just taken, that was taken about three, four weeks ago, three weeks ago, I think. And you see how high the pond is. There's the expansion again. And this is a picture from a resident on Cleveland Street, his backyard. These two backyards got flooded.
Oh, my God. And what's their intention for this pond? For irrigation?
Irrigation. And, you know, the irrigation aspect of it, that's, that's not an issue. If they had come, I believe, before this board and said, we're going to excavate, but it was for, their claim was that it was maintenance of the pond.
Wow.
It's a little more than maintenance. Or at least that's our opinion of it. So, that, this went through the cease and desist, and the, like I said, it's through litigation right now with the town attorney.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have a question about that one. So, is that flooding, was that from all the excavated material that changed the terrain? And do we know, like, was that extra material, like, still on site?
The material that was pulled out of that and excavated was spread out on that property and was spread out on property across the street.
Anything else for the zoning officer? See, none. We're going to move on to the next item. Public participation. At this time, we invite anybody in the audience to come up, any questions they'd like to talk to planning and zoning or staff about, as long as it's not anything that's on tonight's agenda. So, if anybody's welcome to come up, has any questions relative to what we do or anything on your mind, please come up now. See, none. We're going to move on. There's no public participation. You have any bond releases, Rick?
Not this evening.
Next is administrative approvals, and we do have one. Laurie, you want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, we talked about this at the last meeting when we received it. This, this is kind of a new, new thing for us to actually list these again, but it was just modification of parking over at the Alden Street where the basketball gym museum was there, and now it's going to be apartments. So, they got approved parking over there, but they're just reconfiguring it. They're not changing the number. They're actually making it a better access. So, we had discussed that, so.
They're taking a garage out, too, aren't they?
No. Oh, yeah, yeah. They are putting up another garage, yes, yes.
It seemed like it was going to be more of a circle where they could move the cars around a little better.
No, they're taking out a garage, but I think they are putting something else in. But this is, yeah, it's going to be more circuitous as opposed to kind of haphazard all over the site.
So, that, it was an administrative approval, even though it's in your packet? Do you want to look at it? Sure?
Just one question. I didn't see any of that. I'm sorry. I didn't see anything on the plan, and I know that this was approved prior to the new law about EV stations. Are they going to be putting, are, are they required to? Because it's...
Um, because it was prior to the EV requirements? No.
Okay.
They might add some anyway.
No, I was just curious if that was something that they were grandfathered, they didn't have to, or now it's mandated, whether you got the approval prior to?
It's based on new approvals.
Okay, all right. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you for doing that, Laurie. Okay. So, we don't have any continued public hearings tonight.
Do you want me to give my director's report?
We have new public hearings. We have nothing.
You haven't got the planning to report.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I moved up too quick here. Sorry about that. Thank you. Director of Planning, Laurie?
Okay, so, one thing is, I just wanted you to be aware that back in October of 2023, there was a solar farm presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission out on Town Farm Road and Abbey Road. And you may have heard some, some concerns about that recently. You, you, the commission at the time did not really have any comments, but the town has kind of pushed to intervene in this proceeding with the citing councils. And it will be held on May 16th at 2:00 and 6:30. It will be a Zoom link, but that has not yet been provided. So, I know it's going to be on the town manager's webpage, I'm sure, so just wanted you to be aware of that. We are still looking for an assistant town planner. We had somebody that was, that we were working with, but they ultimately declined. So, we're still in the works for that. On the upside, we are getting a new recording secretary. Her name is Dori Marinoni, and she should be starting at the next meeting. So, that's good. You have the amended bylaws in your packet today, just so you, just be aware of that, so you could, they're three-hole punch, so you could put them in.
Do we have to take another vote on that tonight? We voted on it last meeting. We made a couple of changes.
Right, so these, these are the changes that you voted on.
Later on in the agenda, we should be voting on that.
No, you've already voted on it.
But doesn't have to be voted on twice?
No, no. We, we made the amendments as, as directed.
Yeah.
So.
I thought there was something in our bylaws saying about voting on it twice.
I don't know. We could look at the bylaws. I'll look at that while we're...
Yeah, I can look on it. We can do it later.
Let's see. We're, you know, the town's finishing up on budget presentations. And I just wanted, so if you don't mind, I'll just go right out to outside correspondence, because you, you all got your Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Agency's quarterly newsletter for your reading pleasure. And also, the proposed legislation in 2024. There's a couple of things that we will be looking at, but the one thing that we are actually hoping for is the, about halfway down, the online publication of legal notices. That would be saving the town about $15,000 a year if we could do that. And it would certainly make our lives easier. So, I don't know how likely it is going to be, but we've been asking, you know, the, the Connecticut chapter of the American Planning Association and CASIO, Connecticut Association of Zoning Enforcement Officers, have been working towards this for years now. So, we've got our fingers crossed. I know that the newspapers don't, but, but like I said, our budget for legal notices is like $15,000. It's one of the largest line items we have outside of salaries. So, so we'll let you know if anything happens with any of these.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay, I have a question for you, Laurie, on Don Pollan. Have we?
I am meeting, so I was supposed to meet with him last week, and we got sideswiped with, through, you know, just other things happening. So, I have a meeting with him tomorrow at 11:30.
At 11:30 tomorrow?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, are we going to talk about process moving forward? For those who don't know, Don Pollan is our consultant?
Yeah, absolutely. So, I wanted to kind of touch base with him, see where he's at, see where we're at, and then, you know, we'll probably bring you in to, to have a chat.
Okay.
So, but I just want, we just wanted to kind of regroup first.
Thank you.
We'll definitely bring you in.
Any questions for Laurie? Walter?
The town manager was supposed to come in with CIP. Is that for next meeting or?
I, I never have a CIP project.
He said something at the council, meaning that he was, by charter, he has to bring us the CIP.
Oh, oh, right, right, right. Okay. I misunderstood what you were saying. So, yeah, that is usually what happens. So, probably in May.
Okay, all right. Anything else for Laurie? Okay, moving on to Commissioner's correspondence. I'm just going to mention, Laurie, where you had talked about the citing council. I did receive the letter. It was in my packet about the intervenor and when the meeting's going to be.
Oh, excellent.
So, I think that's the council side, and I did hand the letter to Attorney Tyler.
Okay.
Make sure he has it. So, this is the letter I think you were talking about with the dates and times.
Okay, yeah.
Do you want to share that with the rest of the commission through an email, or they only have one copy?
Yeah, I don't, I, I was not given a copy. It was sent to, to you directly, so.
So, I'll, I'll provide you with this later, and maybe you can scan it in at your convenience.
That'd be awesome.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else on Commissioner's correspondence? Nothing? See, none. We're going to move on. New public hearings.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting on Thursday, April 25, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. Public hearing number 3091, 138 North Maple Street, application for special use permit for the expansion of a non-conforming use. Michael Helichu applicant, the Benel- Benelvent Hall owner, map 82, lot 12, I-1 zone.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? Good evening. Your name and address for the record, please, and go ahead and give us a little synopsis of what you're doing.
Sure. Is this on?
Yep. Red button, red light should be on.
Yes. I'm Mike Helichu. I'm one of the trustees of Enfield Elks Lodge 2222. I've been a member of the Elks Lodge for 21 years. We are applying to the Liquor Commission for a new liquor permit for the lodge, because they have shifted their arrangements of, of liquor permits. We have had a club liquor permit for probably 50 years, but that's no longer available. They have switched to two types of club nonprofit liquor permits. One is for a nonprofit organization that's 501(c)(3), and one that is for fraternal organizations like ours, that is just a, they call it a club liquor nonprofit organization. So, the way we had it originally is that our club liquor permit would allow us to serve liquor to members and guests who had signed into the club. But in order to be able to serve guests that are not members of the club and people who want to rent our facility, we need to have this upgraded liquor permit. And we're making our application, and this is part of the process that we're going through.
Laurie, do you have anything to add?
Oh, sorry. So, Rick and I were having a conversation. He said that you had, that there were some concerns over this permit. And I thought, I think that it was a little confusing, because on the one hand, he, they included their liquor permit application with the nonprofit club LPC highlighted. But I think that they referenced it as just a club permit. So, I think what we need to do is clarify that, one, that the, the second floor could be used for their liquor permit, and then clarify whether or not any live music would be allowed under this new club liquor nonprofit organization. So, I don't know. And Rick might have some comments to that effect as well.
Well, I think if you look at the liquor permit application, that may be of some concern, because if you look at the number eight there, type of entertainment is yes. And it lists several different ones that are allowed under the liquor permit, which include karaoke, live bands, play shows, comedians, magicians, and disc jockeys. Those are all checked off. Now, the issue would be, if then you go back to the narrative, and you'll see that it states that we would allow us to serve non-members without having to the, to file the extension of use. It almost makes it sound like this is becoming just a bar. So, that may be a concern to the commission as opposed to how they do it now. So, one of the discussions that we had as rectifying that would be a liquor permit application that does allow entertainment. That could be checked off. But none of the ones boxes below in a condition for the special permit that any event would require a zoning permit review. So that, for instance, if you open it up and sign off on this and approve this as is, there's a possibility that a band could rent out the facility, and you could have 300 people in the, in the hall, basically, and it being run by the band, not necessarily by the, the Elks itself. So, that might be a concern down the road for public safety, for the commission, and everyone else. It's just how you view it and what, what your concerns are as a commission for this approval.
Start with questions. I have a question for Laurie first. It said, in your narrative, I believe, it says alcohol will not be permitted to use outside the building. And on the applicant's liquor application, they're requesting a patio extension to serve liquor.
So, we would...
That's number nine on their...
So, they have an outdoor patio for smoking. It's attached to the building, so we would include that in the premises. So, that's not the rest of the site, and I guess they have, is it a gazebo that you said on the other side?
Pavilion, but it's not in use right now. We are planning to renovate it sometime down the road and would hope to be able to use the outdoor facility and go through the, the required permits, both from the town and the Liquor Commission.
So, that's what the question to you, so they do have a patio, the way the liquor license sits now, to sell liquor on the patio?
I think it's, it's not to sell, but consume.
I'm just going by what's signed here. And then, another question for you, Laurie, you said there's a 1967 variants?
Correct.
If they got for the school, the school didn't open in '72, and there's no copy of the variants here.
That's what I, I don't know. I had to... I'm sure I put it in here. Sorry, I'm pretty sure that it was put in here. Just for reference, I, I didn't include it because I didn't feel, didn't think you really needed it. Okay. I do have a copy of it. It was a variance of section 6-1.4 of the zoning ordinance to allow property, permit premises on Maple Street, Hazerville, to be used for construction of the Elks Clubhouse, based on the extenuating and genuine hardship imposed, which is sufficient to grant application as requested. But that was, that's basically the section that talks about separating distances from schools.
So, was it Hazerville Memorial in 1967?
I honestly don't know. All I know is that the variance was granted.
Verme opened in '72. Right. I just clarify, the information's not here.
There was very little information in the file. We actually...
It was hard to find this.
We, the file was archived, was archived, and I had them pull the file, and there was very little information other than that copy of the variants in there. There was no minutes.
Nothing.
No reference to really anything.
Yeah.
Anybody have any more questions for Laurie at this point? Please. Applicants next.
Maybe some clarification. I know that the Elks was there before the school, prior to the school. Don't ask me why. I know this, because I just got the side eye from my buddy. And I told him why. But I know that they were there. But I know that they were there, so that variance could have been because the school was going to be built. They were already there.
Just clarification.
That's all.
No. Very good question, and I agree.
Could have been for Hazardville Memorial. I don't know what the distance, what was the distance requirement? Was it a mile? I mean, you don't know. Could have been Hazardville.
Thousands of feet.
Thousand feet, then it had to be Fermi.
Yeah.
Yep. Questions for Laurie, or questions for Rick? Go ahead.
Just for the applicant.
We'll be next.
One just for the applicant.
We're not ready for applicants. Does anybody else have questions for staff? John?
Yeah, I got a question with respect to the Health Department's comments. Is it, wouldn't that be addressed through, on the liquor license or the liquor application, as far as their request from the applicant to submit a letter to the Health Department stating that they are not open to the public for regular and special events? In addition, explain the guest policy and up to how many. Aren't they regulated by, by the liquor permit for that use by, by the liquor authority?
To the best of my knowledge, yes, and a lot of times it's just a reminder from some of the departments, it's like, "Hey, by the way, don't forget," type of a thing. So, I do believe that it's regulated strictly by the Liquor Commission.
Well, based upon the comment from the Health Department, are, are we looking for the applicant to address that or to satisfy that with the Health Department, or what's your thought?
So, we do not regulate the Health Department. They are a separate entity, so this is a requirement for them, so.
If I may, I did respond to the Health Department with a letter. They don't want us to serve, to offer food to the public, because our kitchen is not approved for serving food to the public. We just use it for, internally, for the members and member events, and if a caterer comes in, they usually bring the food already prepared and just serve it. So, we, the part of the liquor license says, or the liquor application says that we're not gonna serve food to the public, just, we have peanuts and potato chips and snacks behind the bar.
So, everybody good with staff questions? Now, for the applicant. Did you want to go first, Linda?
Sure. Because there is a concern that somebody can rent your facility, do you have a criteria who can rent your facility? Like, does it have to be an organization that's fundraising, birthday parties, so that we're just, because there's a concern on this application?
Right, of course. And our, our lodge is our lodge. We don't want it taken over by anybody or utilized by outside groups that are only raising money for themselves. One of the things that I can tell you about is that our income from hall rentals was approximately $37,500 last year, and that go, that money goes towards helping us support the community, put on events. We donate the hall a lot to nonprofit groups and what have you, and we also have a limit per the liquor statutes of how much we can make from rental income, and that's, I believe it's 15%. And last year, we made approximately 11% of the profits were from outside or unrelated business income. So, we're, we need to hold down, actually, the amounts of money that we can make from events. We're not gonna go crazy about it, and if you needed something in terms of a policy or criteria, I'm sure our Board of Directors and our trustees would be willing to put something together like that.
No, I was just curious if you had some criteria. Not being a member, could I go and just say, "Hey, I want to have a big party here"? Would that be?
You could, depending on the size of the party. We, we have the largest hall in town, and it can accommodate roughly 250, maybe stretching it 300 people upstairs, but if somebody comes to us and says we're, we want to have a band and sell 1,000 tickets, we cannot accommodate that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Are you all set? So I have a couple of questions. You want to take them one at a time, or you want me to give them all to you?
One at a time, it's fine.
Okay. So you said, in your narrative that you provided, that you were starting from scratch with a new business, and then there's a guestbook waiver. So does that mean now that this is a public bar, no more guestbook? Anybody can come in? You're applying for a guestbook waiver?
No, no. We have had to apply for guestbook waivers under our old liquor permit, and that was the old way of doing it. Now, if we want to have an event with members and guests, we don't have to do the waiver with this new liquor permit. But it doesn't mean we're open to the public. It just means that for our events, and if somebody is having a wedding, for example, obviously, people are gonna be coming in from, from the public for the event, and this liquor permit will allow us to serve them upstairs and downstairs. Unfortunately, when they built the lodge, they did not connect the upstairs and downstairs, so you literally have to walk around outside to get upstairs. And the Liquor Commission considered that a separate, an additional consumer bar upstairs. But according to the Liquor Commission, if we get this upgraded permit, it will cover both the downstairs and the upstairs halls.
So I, yeah, so let me just elaborate on it. So I guess what I was saying is, somebody comes in that's not a member, and you say you do get this new permit. Somebody comes in that's not a member at 3:00 in the afternoon, do they still have to be signed in?
Yes, yes. It's still a members-only organization, so people can't walk in or off the street. If somebody does, and who might be interested in membership in the lodge, we might allow them to sit down and have a drink if they sign the guestbook.
So that still maintains.
So the guestbook is still there. We just don't have to have it for an event where 500, not 500, sorry, where 100 people are coming, that 100 people don't have to sign in. And we've been doing that waiver for our events leading up to this, because that's what the Liquor Commission asked us to do.
Understood. It just seemed like the, the book was going away altogether.
No, no.
Okay. You said there's no changes to the parking area, but this is a special use permit, and there's no parking plan provided?
We're not changing anything, any of the physical layout or aspects, or anything to the building, or the parking, or, we're not changing anything physical.
Right, but just to Laurie, to staff, this is a special use permit. Wouldn't they be required to show parking design? We have parking regulations, and I don't, this is a special use permit. This isn't a variance, right?
So.
This is a new special use permit.
Yeah. I did not require it because the, it was my understanding that nothing, nothing was going to change inside or outside, except for the type of permit. So, I mean, you could require, the applicant could request a waiver of, of the site plan entirely, but nothing is changing from the previous approval.
Because I don't think we can use the variance that we can't find. This has to be a full-blown special use, special use permit.
Well, we found the variance, and they have that, so, you know, the only thing is, is the special use permit criteria is typically that you would have a site plan.
Exactly.
However, we have not, they, they are not changing anything on the site outside of the building.
Okay, so I have a few more questions. Maybe that'll clear some of the things up. So, there's no parking.
Changes.
Changes, and there's no, you didn't provide any parking information. So the building diagram, you gave us a diagram that was written out on both floors, but it did not, didn't provide a number of occupants. What's the occupancy loaded of the building? Now that's back to the parking again. We don't know what the occupancy is. Again, you're, you're applying for a special use permit, so I think that's something that we may need to know, and that kind of ties in with the parking. Laurie, again, to staff and to, well, to Rick. I mean, Rick, you're the zoning officer, so I.
Well, parking would be determined by the square footage of the interior, and we'd look at the occupancy that was already determined by the Fire Department and Building Department for assembly.
And we don't have that?
No, it's not in the application. It's easy enough to get it. We can get that from the Fire Department.
I just want to make sure everything's covered here, because one thing I don't want to do is open up a can of worms because there's, you know, other clubs in town.
Well, if you choose to, for instance, if you choose to continue this, we can get those documents from the Fire Department and Building Department in the square footage.
I got a few more questions.
Just a comment on what you're, I've been to the hall a few times. The Fire Department does have it posted. The maximum occupancy is 400 people. I've seen it. It's posted in the hall.
Again, then we have to see the parking diagram for 400 people, and you got the downstairs bar. They could have two, two events going on at one time. I know it's, my wedding was there 30, 40 years ago. I know it's a big hall, and it wasn't air-conditioned at that time either. It was July. So, but, so let's continue on, and hopefully we can get some, and feel free if anybody wants to add to this, and thank you for that number. Appreciate that. Yeah, so no occupant numbers, and then, in your narrative, you said you weren't changing the type of events. But then, when you get to your liquor permit, and Rick alluded to this, you're asking for karaoke, live bands, plays and shows, comedians, magicians, disc jockeys. So again, when I look at this, the way this application is before us with the liquor license, to me, it's looking like you're asking, you know, for us to approve a, a brand-new bar, you know, featuring live entertainment and, under a special use permit. That's what this, that's what this looks like.
It does look like that, but we're not changing anything. We have had bands and comedians and karaoke, and all of those things going on at the lodge previously.
That's run by the lodge, or run by somebody renting it?
Both.
Both.
Yeah. So all of these activities have gone on already, and we're telling the Liquor Commission in the application that, yes, those types of activities are going to continue.
Again, to me, it's, it looks like just a full-blown special use permit, because of the liquor license. I mean, if it was just, you know, we're gonna have a club liquor license and do away with the guestbook for our events, kind of, that's the same. But to me, this looks like a big difference. You could have a live band up there with 350 people serving them liquor and food, or maybe food if you can get the kitchen approved.
Well, no, no food.
I don't know. I just, those are my concerns. Again, I'd look at, look for staff and the rest of the board here to comment. I just want to be very careful here on this, because to me, it's like we're approving a brand-new bar in town that's gonna have live entertainment.
It, it's a brand-new liquor permit, but it's the same old Elks Lodge.
That's, what about in five years when there's new people in charge? Because this is gonna stay with the building. If we approve it this way, it stays with the building. So the board can change, the trustees can change, and it can, we just gotta be careful.
Of course.
You know, clubs change, and people change that run them. So, five years from now, somebody can say, "Well, let's start Friday night bands," you know, every, or every night. You know, if we approve this application, you could have something there every night, upstairs and downstairs, selling liquor to the public, 400 people upstairs and whatever downstairs holds.
If you can find a way for us to do that, we'd like to hire you to be our promoter.
Believe me, I wish you could, and we, we appreciate everything you do for the community. I've seen your narrative, and that, and everybody, everybody knows you guys have been there forever, but my job here is to look out for the town and the citizens.
Of course.
You know, better, on their behalf.
Sure.
And we do appreciate the Elks and everything you do for the community, but this is, this is very important. Liquor licenses and karaoke, the town is in a couple of situations right now, relative to this kind of thing. We've had some issues. I think there's litigation actually going on. So, again, I just want to make sure that we're doing this, and we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is. I'd open it up. I think Commissioner Olinsky had a question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mike, it sounds like you guys are operating the way you've always operated, as far as having this type of entertainment. And, and the impression I'm getting is that there's a, there's a slight advantage to you for applying for this new liquor permit because of the waiver of the guestbook and that kind of thing. It makes it a little easier to do your things, and it all, it upgrades your liquor permit, so you can have it upstairs and downstairs, which you kind of somehow been doing that anyway, I think.
Yes.
Really?
For, for 50 years, but.
And it's, and it somehow was covered, I guess, you know, prior to this, right?
Yes, it was allowed by the, by the Liquor Commission, but with their change, their modification to their array of liquor permits, we have to have gone through the extension of use requests. I've been a frequent flyer at the Planning and Zoning Office, walking through, and the, the Fire Marshal as well.
So it's really an upgrade due to Liquor Commission upgrades?
Yes.
Okay. And you're not really gonna do anything different than what you've been doing, and you're gonna, you know, a lot of your events are, are run by your own organization.
Yes.
You know, aside from the weddings, and, and we've all been to weddings there. My brother-in-law was married there.
Not in summer.
Well, yeah, it was in the summer. Anyway, so, so, yeah, this doesn't sound like, you know, it requires a lot of new stuff. It sounds like it's just kind of an upgrade, to me.
A paper upgrade, yes.
No, I'll call for it. John, were you first? Did you have your end?
No, if you were first, go ahead. Yeah, a couple of questions. With, with, with respect to the, your current license and regarding the, the events, karaoke, live bands, shows, comedians, magicians, is that under your current permit now? Are you able to do that now under your current permit?
Yes, for members only.
Okay. And, and this would allow private entities to come in, rent the hall, and to have shows and so forth upstairs? Is that the way I understand it?
If, if we, if, we would have to consider it.
Right. Okay. The, the policy on alcohol sales in the, in the hall, because, because that's controlled under your license. So if anybody goes in there and wants to do an event that serves alcohol, and if it's, and if it's a cash bar, you would have to control that. It would be, you would run the bar? Is that the way I understand it?
Yes.
Okay. How about an open bar? Like a stag or something?
Oh, sure. Well, we have had open bars, and the people pay us, obviously, for the open bar.
So, so basically, you control it?
Yes, all the liquor has to be served by us.
So, so somebody can't come in there, rent the hall, serve alcohol, and sell it?
Correct.
Profit from it and so forth?
Correct.
Do events such as that, like, you know, a comedian show and so forth?
Right. No, it would be our bar.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Walter?
Did the price of the permit change?
Yes, sir.
That's the answer.
The, our.
Blame the guy on the left, oh, on the right up there.
The previous permit was $300 a year, and the new permit is 900.
That's your answer, people. That's what he's gotta go through.
Any more questions for the applicant? Benny? Any follow-up on some of the concerns I've had?
Do you have something? What I was thinking was, you could theoretically do a condition, a site-specific condition stating that the non-for-profit club permit is extended to the second level, or includes both the first and second level, and special events with live music must seek a zoning permit. And that way, Rick is able to review what's going to be occurring with that special event, and that's what they've been doing already.
So the club would apply for a special event permit? So the club would apply for a special event permit? The lodge?
No, zoning permit.
Right. The lodge, Rick?
Yeah, so, so what happens now, just so you understand, he would come in, and he's done it probably six or seven times in the past six months, with an extension application from the liquor commission. And on that extension application, which I would have to sign off, I think the building department, the health department, and town clerk has to sign off on, there's a, it lists the event. And that is for a particular day, and a particular time, and a particular event. This new licensing would do away with that. So the control factor is out of it. When it comes in and we look at what the event is, if it's nothing out of the ordinary, there's no reason for not signing off on it. Now, with the blanket-type of club permit that would allow it upstairs also, the, we wouldn't be scrutinizing the event, per se. With the zoning permit added into a site-specific condition, then the event, he could come in, request a zoning permit, and explain what the event was, whether it's a wedding, or whatever it might be, comedian show, whatever it might be, we could review it, and also would go out to the fire department, building department, all the natural reviewers that we normally have.
Okay. Any more questions for the applicant or for staff? Please.
Does that mean that any time they had anything going on there, that they would have to come and say, okay, we need a zoning permit, and then that has to go to the fire department and all the rest of the places?
It goes through the software, number one. And number two, it would only be in an event that involved the alcohol sales.
Well, almost any event you have there, whether it's downstairs or upstairs, is going to involve alcohol sales. Correct me if I'm wrong, but...
There have been one or two without it, but yes, almost everything.
So what we're saying is, okay, these folks are looking for a new liquor license because the state forces them to do that. So to get the liquor license, the state also wants the zoning permits and all that stuff. And I understand all that. That's all fine. But what, what we're saying with, what you just explained, is not only does he have to get the new permit, does he have to run through all the hoops for this, but then every time he has an event, he has to come here. Or are we saying it's just an event if it's upstairs? Or what are we saying here? If we're saying any event he has, that he has to come and get a different zoning thing, we're having a whole lot of headaches on this fellow, I would think.
Well, we're just, all it is is a $5 zoning permit, number one. Number two, it's, it's not up to us. We're just giving you ideas as to how you can do this approval. It's totally up to the commission to decide and what type of conditions you want to put on it.
I was just trying to make sure that I understood what the condition was going to mean. You put it in words, and you say, oh, that doesn't sound bad, but...
Well, looking at another, at another way, if they just wanted to have a band, wanted to hire the Elks Club to have a concert, and you have 450 people inside that building under this approval, then you have a, you have a public safety issue that arises out of that.
I understand.
So it's, you know, six of one and half a dozen of the other. But it's up to you to decide what you want to do.
Okay. Thank you. And that's why I've brought up the question, so we get everything out here to make sure that, main thing, that we're not doing anything to harm the public safety or people that go, or put any kind of liability on them. So that's why, you know, I want to get everything answered. So if there's a number of questions at this time, we're going to open it up to the public. So, Mike, don't go too far. You can come back up. I'll stay right here. And so if there's anybody in the public at this time, we're going to have you come up and speak for or against this application. Is there anybody in the public that wants to come up and speak for or against this application? One more time. Seeing none, public participation is closed. So...
Public hearing is closed.
Public hearing. Public participation. Hey, you ain't, this isn't the Board of Ed. You ain't the chair of the Board of Ed anymore.
I understand that, is correct.
Yeah, yeah. I'm kidding you, Walt.
We had a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, so if you want to close the public hearing, that would be...
No, I want to close the public participation part.
So that would be closing the public hearing?
Well, there's no...
Well, okay, you still want to speak with the applicant?
Yeah, we still want to speak with the applicant, and I have to go around the table here and see what everybody wants to do. And first, I like to go to Rick. You're the one that has to keep an eye on this stuff. I mean, if everybody's fine with it, I raise the concerns. If everybody's good with it, the way it goes, I mean, there's a lot of possibilities here. I brought them up. It's what everybody wants to do. I'm just the guy running the meeting, so. This is, you know, we don't want anything coming back on us with this kind of stuff. I mean, we've, we've had a couple of incidences here in town, and I think we got litigation going on right now. It has to do with karaoke and bands and patios and liquor establishments. So I, I just want to be very careful and get everybody's consensus in here before we vote. Go ahead. Vinnie?
With all due respect, Mr. Chair, I think we're going, just taking this way over beyond, he's been here forever. There's never really problems there. The guy's trying to get a liquor license. What's going to change at the Elks? I'm just saying, it's been, he could have been doing this this whole time on the bottom floor, seriously, under his own permit. Me, leave the stipulation out. I don't see anything, anything wrong with this. He has plenty of parking. I don't feel he needs to go spend the money, and more money. I don't feel he needs to, I, Rick, no disrespect either. I know it's five bucks, but this guy's going to be in here three times a week sometimes. It adds up. My opinion.
Not...
I, I don't see a problem. And I don't go there, and I'm not a member. I'm sorry. I'm not a juror.
I raised some questions, so everybody can think about them, because there are things that could happen. This isn't, to me, this is a new special use permit. This is what we're doing here. And remember, what we do is there forever. And so, and if you look at the liquor license, that's what we're doing. We're really opening up a new bar. They can do whatever they want, seven days a week, with 400 people. I don't want to stop. I'm not saying I'm against them. I'm just bringing, it's my job to make everybody aware of what I think.
Right.
It's only me.
Yeah.
You have to think about these things, and staff has to, staff has to participate too.
Understandable, but think about it. Is that a bad thing, opening up any?
I owned the bar for 10 years. Come on. I know all about it. It's not a big deal. But we, I'm not a bar owner right now. I'm the chairman of the planning and zoning, so I got to make sure that we do this correctly for everybody who's involved.
Understandable, but everything that we're talking about that he wants to do upstairs, he's already been able to pretty much do downstairs. We're just, and like you said, I don't know about the occupancy on the building. I've never been in there, but I believe if it's 400, I don't think that can change, because he still owns the top. Am I wrong about that?
400 is a lot of people.
It is, but it's always been 400.
I know. I, I'm very familiar with the Elks. I'm a past member. Very familiar. My wedding was there. I'm just making sure that everybody, I'm bringing, these could be nothing. Everything I ask could mean nothing, but I just want to get them out there, just in case.
Well, it's not...
And I'm not saying that I'm right or I'm wrong. I just want to bring some issues out relative to liquor and liquor permits, the way I read this liquor permit, what they're doing. And my feeling, again, is we're doing a full-blown permit here, without most of the documents we require for other permits. That's another thing. Have we set precedent for that, too?
Well, it is a special permit, not changes.
There's no drawings here, there's no parking lot, there's no, there's nothing. We're just throwing it out there, and we're going to approve it. But if you guys all want to do that, I'm good with it. Next, who else? Please.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask the, the staff, why would we need the condition if it's something that they've always, always been doing anyway? Right, right now, they're, they're coming for the permits anyway, right? The $5 permits or whatever they need, the zoning permits, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So they're already doing that. The new liquor license doesn't preclude that. You still need to do that, don't you?
We do. And so I can tell you, for instance, if there's an issue with, for instance, they had a boxing event out there at one time, and fire department had to go out there, they had to be present. It's because of the other boxing regulations, and they had to be present at the time. So now, not that they would do it, but I'm just saying, the opportunity is there now. For instance, like I said before, a band, an entity, coming to them and saying, we just want to rent your hall, we're going to have a concert. The other, had that taken place now, when they have to go for an extension for the bar, they would come up, and we would know about that. All right, so...
So it was the extension that was driving the need for the zoning permit?
Correct. So we, we would, we would have purview over that to see what the event was.
Okay.
Now, for instance, that wouldn't, wouldn't happen in this case.
Okay. So therefore, that's why you're proposing this condition, is a, so that would go away with the new permit?
Correct.
Okay. I got it. Thank you.
Mr. Petronella?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, it's a special use permit, but it's, to me, it's a continuation of the same use. Nothing's really changing. And, and I don't feel that we should require a full-blown site plan review, meaning parking and building and so forth. It, it, it is an existing use, it's just a continuation of it. He's updating his liquor license, so, and no real changes are being made. I'm just a little bit perplexed as to how this is different than what he's been doing in all the other clubs in town in the correlation. Are we, are we singling out the Elks Club, rather than all the other clubs in town as well?
We normally don't get too many extensions, because whatever the permits or club permits that they have, it's, it's been covered for years now. This is the first time we've had a change since I've been here in the past 10 years, from an expansion, I guess, of the, for the full property, not property, but the premises.
Mr. D'Antonio, anything?
If we go back to, I think Laurie's proposal, or consideration for a proposal, and through the chair, to Laurie, Laurie, correct me if I'm wrong, did you suggest we could specify events with just live entertainment, so that they, so that, could that be like, kind of like the middle ground, where if they wanted to do an event, but didn't have live entertainment, they'd be able to do it without coming and filing a permit? But if they wanted live entertainment, then they would have to file that $5 zoning fee? So Laurie, was that kind of what you were getting at, kind of an in-between?
That was my proposal, and Rick and I had discussed it prior to this evening, and we both kind of agreed on that.
So...
As a suggestion to the commission, as a possibility.
So it would be an improvement over today, because today, if they wanted to use both floors, even with no live entertainment, they'd have to submit the application for an extension and to use the second bar. So if we did this today, we would at least save them that trouble, but then we could still have purview over, most likely, their larger events with live music. I mean, so it, it does, I, I am in support of, of staff's recommendation. I think it's a good balance to strike. And I also agree with Commissioner Petronella. It, it does, it, it is definitely a continuation of use, so I, I don't want to treat it as a brand-new application. There's no change to the use. It's just the liquor permit. But yeah, so that's my thought.
So can we put a condition on that would override the liquor permit?
No, this wouldn't override it. It just clarifies, for our purposes, the type of liquor permit that we are approving, and basically, well, let me read it again. So, and I actually modified it already. The not, the not-for-profit club permit, because there are, that is what it's called now, with premises including both the first and second levels. Okay, so, so it includes both levels. That was the whole point of this, is you needed the second level to be included, and we only included the first. So that's where the extension came in. And then, special events with live music must seek a zoning permit. That's it.
If staff is suggesting that, and you are the professional advisors here, that's something that maybe we should consider as a commission.
Mr. Chair, do we want to ask the applicant if that's something they're amenable to?
We could.
Of course, it's not, you know, it's not their decision, but...
Oh, sure, we can hear from you. He's still here. We can, yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Mike, what do you think?
Include...
Well, as I understand it, this can be done via the computer. You said via software?
The zoning permit?
Yes.
Yes, you can do on OpenGov. And it's $5.
Okay.
And you've been doing it already, apparently. You've been coming in, though.
Well, the, the extension requests that I've brought in have not been related to the entertainment. They've been related to the events that would be using the upstairs hall, and for which we would be wanting to sell liquor. So we've never really had an approval process for entertainment. But if the commission would like us to do that, I can process a request for every band?
Well, I think what staff's suggestion is, kind of guides us...
Sure.
...what we do to make sure that everybody's protected and everybody's fine.
Right. And, and we want to be compliant...
Of course, of course.
...and cooperative with whatever.
And I'm trying, you know, to make that happen here tonight, and just, everybody feel comfortable with their decision, because it involves liquor, and, you know, there's other clubs, and we don't want to start any hoopla about this.
Sure.
Staff, is that, is that good? Does everybody feel comfortable with staff's suggestion? Yep. Okay. John?
Can I ask?
Sure.
Excuse me, can I ask staff, Laurie, through the chair, can, can you read that condition again or draft it?
I'm writing it out for you right now.
Please do.
And just for clarification, I, am I correct in understanding that this would become effective when we get our new liquor permit?
I've seen some timetables in there. I have to go back and read them. I think they were in the conditions. The staff will be able, the staff will be able to help you with that and work with you after we're done.
Okay.
But I did see some, some dates in there, some time, 120 days even. I think you had plenty of time, if I remember. But staff will help you with that.
Okay.
After we prove it, yeah. You're still in the process with the state, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And we need this approval before we can even submit to the state.
Right. Yeah, so in that timeframe, they'll be there for your, assist you.
Would this be site-specific?
Site-specific.
Thank you.
Okay. So now I will, I guess we're done. I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
Show moved.
Second, seconded by Commissioner Olinsky to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Who made the motion? I'm sorry, because we don't have a recording secretary. Okay.
I think we've got to do a roll call, John, on the public hearing closure, I believe.
Okay.
Four?
Was it Greg?
Four.
Kenneth Olinsky?
Four.
Freddie Grillo?
Four.
Joseph Newell?
Four.
Terrence Lynch?
Four.
John Petronella is four.
Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve PH, do I want to write one? Yeah, PH 3091.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve public hearing number 3091138, North Maple Street, application for a special use permit for the expansion of a liquor permit with a non-conforming use. Michael Helichu, applicant, the Benelvent Hall owner, map 82, lot 12, I-1 zone, with the staff... "The not-for-profit club permit includes both the first and second levels as the premises, and second added site-specific condition is, 'Special events with live music must seek a zoning permit.'"
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Olinsky. Roll call vote, please. Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Kenneth Olinsky.
Four.
Vinnie Gorillo.
Four.
Joseph Muley.
Four.
Terrence Lynch.
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
Very good, unanimous vote, all four. This is closed, congratulations and good luck.
Thank you, and thank you for doing what you're doing.
Thank you very much for your time tonight, I really appreciate it. And I appreciate the support of the staff who've helped me walk through all these-
And they're still here for you going forward.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, with respect to PH 3090, I'm going to recuse myself on this application.
Okay. And we need to seat an alternate, I believe, right? We have enough? One, two, one, two, three. You're an alternate, right? Four, five, we have six.
Yeah, it's April, so it's Christian.
I don't have that sheet. So it's going to be Christian. Yep. So we're going to seat Commissioner D'Antonio tonight as a regular member.
And then I'll read the, okay. Since the secretary, since the secretary has recused himself per our bylaws, the second vice president will, vice chair will take over for secretary. So I will read the public hearing legal notice. "The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at their regular meeting of Thursday, April 25, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. PH number 3090, 145/153 South Road. Application for the development of a large, flexible residential housing project per section 4.70.8. Enfield Properties LLC, applicant-owner, Maplewood Village Event Field LLC and Michael Panella owners. Map 55, lots 59 and 80, I-1/R-44 zones."
Thank you. The applicants are here before us. Name and address for the record, three gentlemen. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Attorney Paul Smith, 27 South Main Street, Windsor Locks, Connecticut. To my left is Frank Traiano, on behalf of Enfield Properties LLC, who is the applicant. To my right is Dave Ziyaks of H.A. Hesketh Associates, the civil engineer on the project. I might precede you, Mr. Chairman. So this property, as you heard in the notice, is 145153 South Road in Enfield. It's a 32-acre parcel. Parcel is currently zoned in part Industrial 1 and R44, and it is basically a transitional vacant piece of property. Back in 2018, Enfield Properties, I represented them, and so did Dave Ziyaks, came before the Planning and Zoning Commission, actually to work on the drafting and approval of section 4.70.8, with the express purpose of allowing these type of large transitional vacant parcels located near the I-91 corridor to be considered for a special use permit for multifamily use. What we are proposing tonight is 168 units of market-rate apartments. And I would note at the beginning that your plan of conservation and development in Chapter 5, which was adopted just a year or so ago, indicates the need for diversity in housing mix and the need for multifamily housing, and has different strategies to address that within the P O C D. But one of the things this commission did back in 2018 was designate this area near the I-91 corridor for the appropriate types of properties to be used, for the residential portion to be used for multifamily, so that this vacant parcel that we're presenting to you tonight fits well within the scheme of that special use permit within the I-91 So fast forward after COVID to now, we are coming to you for the approval of a special use permit under 4.70.8. With regard to the property itself, 17.6 acres is R44. Dave has provided a table on the plans, which would show the number of units allowed, the number of units provided. We're allowed up to 16 units per developable acre, we're only proposing eight. We're allowed 66% impervious coverage, we're only proposing 23%. Our plan calls for three-story buildings, served by elevators, with storage for each of the units in the attic. There are seven buildings, the largest building has 30 units, the smallest 18. There are 88 one-bedroom, 82-bedroom units. We were sensitive in drafting and in consideration that there should be amenities for the apartments, for the multifamily units. Here we've proposed a clubhouse, a pool, a gazebo and sitting area, and two outdoor picnic areas, as the four amenities required under the regulation. We have Ben Davis taken this through the wetlands approval process, of course, which is required before we bring it to you for a special use permit. There is 7.26 acres of conservation area, and we've also considered, I think, another important area is the buffers. Under this regulation, subsection C, section 7, the commission has to determine whether the buffer areas we are proposing are adequate, taking into consideration the other parts of the regulation. Basically, we're trying to leave the, I think, the perimeter of the property as natural as possible. It's fairly wooded and fairly heavily vegetated, so we're trying to leave that alone, allow the service of natural buffers, where that isn't adequate or sufficient. I think we've proposed additional plantings. So that's a general overview. I'm going to have Dave sort of walk us through the plans, and the architecturals to sort of give us sort of a more detailed overview. And obviously, we're all here to answer any questions or address any issues. Thank you, Dave.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman-
Good evening.
-and members of the commission. Dave Ziyaks, I'm a professional engineer and the president of F.A. Hesketh Associates. We're located down in East Granby. And the plan set that's before you this evening was prepared by my office. I put the title sheet up here on this PowerPoint presentation we have. And this is the master plan, it's sheet MA1. As Paul pointed out, it contains all of the zoning data table, information that you need to see a comparison of what is required and what we are proposing, and we feel we meet all the criteria that's spelled out in the zoning regulations. As far as parking goes, we're providing 253 parking spaces, which I think is five more than what the calculations say we need. And mixed in with those 253 spaces, there'll be 26 EV spaces to start out with, it's a 10% rule. We will be installing additional infrastructure, mostly conduits through the facility, so if that need grows as EV demand increases over the years, we won't have to start ripping up asphalt and sidewalks and things to add additional EVs. So we'll be building that in to the design. Just for historical purposes, this is, this master plan dates back to like around 2010. Originally, we had come to the commission with the seven buildings are located on the bottom, and that's the apartments. That's down being to the east. And at the time, we had planned, as part of this mixed use on the property, some small office buildings located along South Road. Given the market conditions for those types of buildings, it's very difficult to tenant those buildings and finance those buildings. We've pulled that portion of the project out of this application and are focusing on the market rate apartment part of this. Leaving that open for future development, obviously, hopefully, as market conditions change, or some user comes to town is looking for a location, we'll be able to provide that for them. We'll have to come back to the commission, obviously, for a modification at the time, but that land will be available. So the master plan changes now to what's before you this evening, where we have the main driveway, just off to the right-hand side there is Freshwater Boulevard, where it ends at South Road. There is a traffic light located at that location. So basically, all the land that is, will remain green is the industrial portion of the site, and the apartments are on the R44 portion of the site. So again, on this drawing, west is 91 is to the top of the drawing, and east is to the bottom of the drawing. As Paul pointed out, there are seven buildings, they range in size from 18 to 30 units. The larger units are up along South Road. The smaller units, as you can see, are down at the south end, closer to our budding neighbors. We thought that was an appropriate design, was to make those buildings a little more smaller, a little bit more in context with the residential neighborhoods, and then put the larger buildings up along South Road. The site amenities, we have a community building, or clubhouse, and I think my little pointer works here, yeah. That would be located right here, and we have an outdoor swimming pool proposed there, and there'll be a patio area with opportunities for some grills down at that location as well. As you know, you're not allowed to have your own grill on the decks at the apartment unit, so we have to provide areas for picnicking and grills for the tenants. So we have another location here, next to this unit over here, and then another nice one down here at the south end of the project, so we've spread those out. So you can see, we have basically two clusters. Some of this is because we're working around wetlands on the property, but that actually turns out to be a nice asset here. So we have our main driveway coming in across from Freshwater Boulevard. We'll have to modify that traffic light to accommodate our driveway, and then we've been in contact with the police department, and we're going to have to upgrade this intersection for full pedestrian access. It's an older signal there, now it doesn't really have that. Inside our development, we have an internal set of sidewalks that ties all the buildings and the parking areas together. The sidewalk will come out to South Road, there is currently a public sidewalk all along the length of South Road, so we'll have a new crossing there at the traffic light with appropriate push buttons and things like that to activate the traffic light. Then elsewhere scattered around through the site, we have a gazebo area here, a pool area. It's located right in this location here, there'll be some benches around there, this is going to be a nice natural feature, right here in the middle of the parking area, so that'll be a good place to read a book maybe someday. There will be a fire lane connected here to Barrett, that will be gated and locked. Fire Department, Police Department will have the appropriate access at that location, but it's purely for emergency purposes. All of the traffic and everything will be directed out to South Road at the traffic light. We have public water and sanitary sewer available to us. This is a blow-up of the layout plan that shows all the details throughout the facility that you have an opportunity to take a look at. We have a, quite an extensive landscaping plan as part of the development. As you can see, there's a nice row of trees on both sides to the entrance with a landscaped median that goes out to South Road. We have plenty of landscaping scattered throughout the parking areas and around the units. Some of this landscaping is more ornamental or aesthetic-type standard landscaping, and then a lot of it around the edges is wetlands buffer kind of plantings, so that we provide buffer between the wetland areas and our parking lots and the buildings and the like. So there's a mixture of different types of plantings. The site lighting will be modest, we're looking at 14-foot-high standards with colonial-type fixtures, it'll be all LED lighting on the site, but the point of the lighting is just to provide the minimum for security purposes and nothing else. The buildings, they're basically the same design that is dated back to the previous master plan. They're fairly conventional and colonial style. A mix of nice siding materials being proposed by the architect. There'll be full architectural asphalt shingles, as you can see, they have nice gable roofs, dormers on the top to break up the roof, the expanse. Every unit has its own deck or a ground patio, and what makes these buildings really nice is there's a central core entranceway with a lobby where you'll have your mailboxes and areas for, of course, today, package deliveries, that's a big issue with apartments these days. And at that location will be the elevator that will access all the floors, including the attic, and then staircases on either side of the buildings. So it's going to have a nice feature to it, they're three stories tall with a fairly pronounced roof to add some architectural to the building. And you can see, that was the 30-unit building, all the buildings are the same, they're just proportionally smaller. That would be the 24-unit building. And then the smaller 18-unit building that would be down at the south end. The feature here that's interesting, I think, in many of our projects we've had this, is rather than proposing a basement here, which is usually extremely large and expensive for these sized buildings, a much more practical approach is to put self-storage bins up located in the attic for the tenants, and they'll have access to that area by the elevator and by the staircases that, you know, will feed on both sides for egress out of the buildings. All of the buildings will be sprinkled by code, and there'll be wired security system throughout the building for the tenants, for your typical security purposes. Staff comments, the town engineer really reviewed these drawings for the wetlands application, there's really no change from the wetlands application plans that were presented. He thoroughly reviewed the drainage, we have a fairly extensive stormwater control plan for the project that's blended in to the site design, and he had reviewed that and approved it during the wetlands application. Planning had a few comments, they were good to provide those for us with about at least a solid week's notice, and we responded back in writing to their comments. I think a lot of those were, have been successfully addressed, and there may be one or two smaller items still outstanding that we would deal with staff in a normal fashion prior to the filing of the plans. We do have to go to OSTA, which is the State Traffic Administration, to modify. We currently have a certificate for the site, but we have to modify it a bit and bring it up to date, and they will be involved in the review of the traffic light improvements as well, along with the town staff. So that process is already started. And I think that's about it, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Staff, Lori, anything?
Staff, Lori, anything you wanted to add?
We had a couple of just minor comments, but I could, you want me to do that now?
Sure.
Before questions? Okay.
That might take care of some of our questions.
Yeah, so a couple things. All right, just for your benefit, you'll have to do, make a finding as to the development amenities, that they are satisfactory. We do need lighting plans, and the applicant is going to be requesting that that be a condition of approval with the photometric plan, so that's gonna be up to this commission as to whether that's-
Is that including a couple of things that were minor left out to complete, what the architect, what Dave was saying?
Yes, yes, right.
So that's included in that? Okay.
I mean, the thing about a photometric plan is, is you basically have to show that there's zero leakage of lightage off-site, so I mean, it's, it's not, we, we don't deliberate over that very often.
No, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't something other than what Dave was saying that was outstanding.
So that, that will be a request of the applicant. Let's see. Seeds, da-da-da-da. Oh, they, they, there's a buffer modification, so they'd like to, they, we'll have to discuss this because it's along the roadway, and there's, it, to the right side. If you see that bright green, that is where the clearcutting will stop. So apparently, there's a very large area of woods there, so we might seek a condition, or staff might request that the PCC seek a condition, that staff would be able to see the, after it's been cut back, whether or not it is adequate buffer, because sometimes when you do that, you think these trees are really big and they're really full, and all of a sudden, you get, you cut the big ones down and just the little ones are there, so, you know, maybe-
There are certain times of the year you wanna look at it as well.
Yeah, exactly.
I think we've had other applications where we kinda left it open to the springtime when things are blooming. I don't know what the construction schedule's like, but you could handle that internally.
Right, so, so, I mean, this has been done before, so they just seek a waiver of that buffer because of the fact that there is existing vegetation. However, sometimes trees don't tend to do well once they're exposed, if they were the internal trees. So that's just something that we could discuss as well. So yeah, just those, that buffer yard, and then they're also proposing to, instead of the 100-foot buffer in the residential zone to the industrial, they're proposing to, to put a note on the plan. I think you, you've already done this, but-
You're talking about to the west now, right?
Uh, to the north, so-
The north is the South Road.
No, it's to the west.
To the west.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes. Okay, yes, yeah, okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah.
Sorry, getting late.
So they're proposing to put the 100-foot landscape buffer to the industrial zone on the industrial zone.
And that's their, that's their property, though.
Right, that, it makes sense.
Right.
So, so just that would be required. I don't think that there was much else. They, as I said, this is kind of a redo, so they've pretty much met everything or exceed, everything meets or exceeds otherwise.
So we'll open up to the commission now for any questions, and we'll start down with Mr. D'Antonio.
I don't have anything.
You're good? Go over here to Linda.
Back over.
Yeah, I just, I was just curious about the, originally, the, the proposal was for elderly housing, I think way back when. Are you allocating any of the apartments for elderly or affordable housing or anything like that at this point?
Yeah, I, I would say no, although as a matter of practicality, you would find a fairly large segment of the units would be used by elderly, but, but we're not, we're not putting sort of some sort of number. It, it tends to work out that way sort of overall these days. I would think that's a fair way to put it, Dave, I think, yeah.
Yeah, I think especially with the design of the buildings, it's gonna be very attractive to adults in particular versus a lot of the garden-style apartments that we're working on. This is a little bit different product in that.
Okay. All one-bedroom and two-bedroom units, so, you know, again, pretty limited.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah. Okay. Thank you. Yes, I'm awesome.
Did he have anything?
So, staff, I'm sorry. So really, the, the basic changes that they're made, that they're trying to make compared to what they were approved for already is a buffer? Is that? I'm just asking, I just wanna be-
Um, I'm not sure how the buffer changed from the original. It's just that currently, they are, I don't know whether they went in as far before into the wooded area, but I, you know, essentially, it's, it's very much the same.
So what were the changes that, from this?
Well, it's, it's going from elderly to just regular apartments.
Regular? Is that, is regular low? There's different things, there's different-
The market.
These are mar, these are market rate apartments, meaning whatever the, the market bears for price.
I just wanted, I didn't understand what it was for. I mean, not that that made a difference, I just wanted to clarify what, what we changed it to, that's all. No, I have a-
And I believe some of the, the buildings have changed slightly as well.
Just say, yeah. I seen them, I mean, they, I just didn't know if, what the real changes were, but yeah, that's all. Just wanted to make sure.
That was the big change. Elderly to market rate, so.
And, and the swimming pool's been added.
Right, and there you go.
Can I use the swimming pool? Right, no, I gotta be a resident.
Rent an apartment, you can.
Really? Does she really have anything?
Actually, I do have a couple little things. The lighting thing, my concern was lighting around a swimming pool is huge, especially you may get families and they have younger kids. Like I said, I don't, didn't we didn't get a lighting package per se, but I would suggest that you make sure that pool is lit really well. The other thing, the storage on the top floor, I'm not an engineer, but I'm assuming you're designing to accommodate any weight that applicants would be putting up there, because people are pack rats. And my other question-
As long as they don't try to park a car up there.
Yeah. The other question is, would that be a climate-controlled area, or is that gonna be like blazing hot because it's on the top floor?
Yeah, no, I talked about that week before. It would be ventilated, you know, to keep the temperature reasonable.
Okay.
It won't be air-conditioned, no.
No, I would, I would imagine it's gonna get pretty warm up there.
No, no more, no less than like a self-storage facility would be anywhere in town, you know. But actually, better than that, because those aren't usually-
Yeah, there's no ventilation in those.
Now, this, this, you would have a good moderate temperature, you know.
Okay.
I don't think the owners wanna-
He did either.
Buy, have to buy-
No.
I was just curious.
Replace people's belongings or whatever.
I was just curious for that.
It's a very unique thing. I, I kinda like the idea, it's-
Yeah, I mean, it would probably have people collect less junk.
They have to carry them up three floors.
Because they gotta carry them upstairs or pack it in an elevator.
Have to give them a nice elevator.
It's an interesting idea, but yeah. That was it, thanks.
You're welcome. Walter?
I'm also.
I'm good. You're good? Okay, so staff instructed us to talk about the amenities. We have a pool, we have some picnic areas, sitting areas. Is there any questions from the board? Go ahead.
Yeah, actually, yeah, I have a question about amenity as well as something else. As far as the amenity goes, I don't think this is actually counting towards it, but can you describe the, the green space behind the gazebo, which is on, on the right side of the diagram, green and round space?
Can you point out the gazebo again? Thank you.
It's right over here.
So it, it looks to be-
It's gonna be right in this location here.
From the diagram, it's, it's a little depressed, right? So it's, it's-
Yeah, it's actually a sort of a stormwater feature, if you will, but it's gonna be planted in a natural state, so it'll be kind of a meadow.
Meadow?
Yeah, it'll look like a meadow.
So do, do you have a, that, I, I was wondering if that was going to be kind of an open area for recreation. So do you have any open, and, and I know the, in between the buildings, about halfway through, that's a wooded area. I think that'll be very nice.
Yep.
Do you, do you have an open area for recreation?
Not, not, you know, a field type of thing. This, this site, the, you know, the, the wetlands on this site is a challenge, but it's actually kinda made the project, I think, better, you know, because it's providing a lot of isolation between the units and the like. But no, we don't have any real open area. We're doing more things like you would see like in a, in a, you know, a modern-day apartment complex, which is the swimming pools, the, the grill areas, things of that nature that we know the tenants like, but there, there's no really wide-open, you know, play area type of thing. I think one of the thing too here is that even though it's not one of the listed amenities, unlike a lot of developments, this does have a, a full sidewalk tied into a public sidewalk, which is really nice. If you really, you know, wanna take a walk and get up to the shopping areas on a nice day, it's not that far, you can walk. The other thing too is, which we don't really show here, but it exists, it's definitely out there, is out in the, is particularly at the south end of the site, and in particular, say after the fall, there's a lot of older trails throughout this whole property that are there for various reasons, whatever, old farm roads, whatever Frank and I have actually walked around out there quite a bit exploring. And then there's a lot of open space to the south of us, so there's a lot of opportunity, particularly not necessarily in the hottest summer months, but nice in the spring and in, in the fall. You can really wander around quite a bit out there. It's, it's a nice wooded area, and then eventually over towards the industrial property too, so I think there's a lot of opportunities here for folks, given the constraints on the land.
And if, we can go back to the amenities, but if, I kinda wanna tie into what you were saying about the bicycle network and, or sidewalk network, rather. There we go, spoiled, spoiled was what I was gonna say. But yeah, it's great that you have a sidewalk network. I mean, it's not the most impressive of bike lanes, but South Road is part of Enfield's kind of burgeoning bike network. Again, it's, it's not the greatest bike lane, but there is some. It's about, you know, mile and a half from the commercial center of town, which has a lot of businesses for shopping and recreation and, and work, of course. I don't see any, any mention of bike parking. Is this, is that, is that something that you've considered?
Yeah, we, we'll probably put some in here, but I'll be honest with you, I've done a number of these developments, and we've put bart, outside bike parking, and no one uses it. They don't wanna leave their expensive bikes or whatever outside, so with the self-storage facility, they'll, they can buzz them up the elevator and park them in there, a nice safe location. People put them in their units, too, you know, it's just the way it is. We, we'll probably put a couple around, but that's not, I guess, we've done that, and I've been watching it, and very few people actually leave their bicycles outside, you know.
Indoor parking is important, too, and, and I had noticed the attic, and I wanted to ask about the, the size. That does seem like that would be good parking if not, you know, if the, you know, the resident doesn't have space in their unit. What's the size of those attic spaces?
I think they're in the order of like 12 by 15, something like that.
Good size.
So it would, it would be sufficient for-
There's a lot of room up there, that's not a problem.
That's a good size.
Yeah, elevator access is important as well.
Yeah, you gotta have the elevator access.
And it's one per unit?
Yes. Yeah.
One per unit, okay. All right, great, thanks.
Anybody else? So, well, we'll talk about the amenities. It's nice to see something come through that has these kind of amenities. The yellow oranges, that's the clubhouse?
Yeah, the clubhouse is right here, next to the pool.
Okay, so this is apartments, it's not a condo area, so just a little bit on how you go about keeping those up or keeping them maintained and safe, do you have a property manager that's gonna live there? The pool being open, so we haven't had any, I haven't had anything like this come before us?
Yeah, a couple, couple things we've submitted as part of the package of management plan, which sort of covers maintenance of the stormwater, the important things for the town, which is the stormwater drainage and, and snow removal and that sort of stuff, so that you make sure that the, the complex functions appropriately. Long terms and, long-term in terms of ownership, generally, these apartment complexes now have a manager sort of on site.
That's where I was going, right, apartment manager that stays there?
And he may not live there, but he's there every day.
Right.
It's gotta be, it's sort of a maintenance thing, it's, you know, to make sure there's no issues, to resolve any issues that there are. So usually, it's day-to-day.
So basically, that will encompass the pool, the clubhouse?
Yeah, exactly.
Some person that's gonna be out there doing that?
Exactly.
And these, these kinds of pools are very heavily regulated by the Department of Health. It's, it's pretty complicated just to get the permit to build one of these pools.
Wow. Did they make you put a elevator in?
Yeah, the treatment systems are heavily scrutinized, all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I've seen them, yeah, that's quite a, that's why I was asking about somebody there, you know, because-
Definitely, the pool would definitely need daily-
You were looking for more grill areas, is there anywhere near the pool where somebody could cook out?
Yeah, we're gonna do that, and-
That would be nice.
Maybe over at the gazebo, and then definitely two established areas, one at the north end and one at the south end with some tables and things.
So how would that go now? Would that be like a piped gas, or somebody would have to take care of the propane? Do you think about that yet, or?
Yeah, it may have to go to propane. It's funny, you know, what your regulations talk about, the need to demonstrate gas. Gas is available at the intersection with, with Freshwater, and it's, it's just one of these, I was thinking about this earlier. Back when this regulation was written, the state of Connecticut was promoting heavily the conversion to natural gas from others.
But they can't get it.
Now, I have two major apartment complexes that have just switched during the design process from gas to all-electric.
Wow.
And this is what's getting pushed right now, is less gas and all-electric units. There's various reasons, federal regulations, but, you know, incentives, blah, blah, blah. You can talk about that for the rest of the night. But that is what's going on, so gas is becoming less attractive. Now, you know, Frank may decide in building these things that, that we go with gas.
Right.
And we have gas available, so that would answer that issue, but if not, we'll have to go to propane tanks.
If you bring it in, you'll bring the gas line in. Who's gonna bring the line from Ohio to Connecticut then? We can have you.
That's what I, I-
And that's the problem, that's why we don't have any gas.
Ironically-
Who's gonna do, is that part of, can we make that a condition of approval? Pipeline in from Ohio?
When you guys wrote the regulation, you were being responsive to what the state was pushing everybody towards, toward natural gas, and now it seems like we're going in another direction.
Yeah, that's very nice design. Is there anything more in the amenities? Staff, that was what you wanted us to look at? I think, I think it's adequate.
Yeah, I just, when you do your motions and final decisions, it should be mentioned, that's all.
Okay. It should be part of the motion now, right? Did you do the motion for approval?
I don't, there is a motion in here, but there's still some things lacking. We haven't had any comments from engineering, WPC, health, or traffic at this point. And unfortunately, the regulations actually says if gas is available, it shall be, shall be utilized, so.
Our regulations?
Yes.
Well, that's the plan at this point, right?
Yeah, that's the plan.
Yeah.
So there's still some open things out from staff, from the different departments? Need to answer, right? So we need, so we'll get the comments from them to you guys, and then you guys can, before the next meeting?
Absolutely, yeah, we would, we had, the expectation was to continue to the next meeting to finalize.
Yep, and you can button everything up.
So should we keep the public hearing open?
Yeah, we're gonna see if anybody in the public wants to come up now and, and speak. We'll, we'll keep it open. So again, at this time, is there anybody in the audience that would like to come up and speak for or against this application? Okay, so just to, you can start coming up. So just to the, to the panel here, we talked about last week, length of time to let the public speak, and we were gonna talk, we talked about putting it into bylaws, we decided not to. I don't wanna arbitrarily pick times. We don't have it in our bylaws, so what's good for everybody, I'll just pull a little straw, pull three minutes, five minutes, what do you guys want? Because I don't wanna be arbitrarily picking time to speak for the public on every application, because it's gonna jam me up, it's gonna jam all of us up. I wish we would've put it into bylaws, we didn't, so just a consensus of what you guys would think would be appropriate, three minutes, five minutes, first round, second round?
Three minutes.
Three minutes? Three minutes?
I don't, don't see a reason for it. We don't have a courthouse.
It doesn't matter, I don't wanna be the one to say how long people are gonna speak arbitrarily at each public hearing. Again, I stressed it last week, or two weeks ago, that I thought it should be in our bylaws, so it's there for everybody all the time. So I'm gonna put this on to three minutes, and I figure out how to start this, right here. Okay, sir, your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Fred Bellinger, I live at 43 Barrett Road, I'm gonna butter to this property.
Okay, I'm gonna start your time.
I have a couple of questions. I wanna know how big the buffer zone is gonna be behind my property and the beginning of that property, what they're, what they're proposing. of that property, what they're, what they're proposing to build.
Okay. Is that the only question you have? Please continue.
I have a couple of other questions. I, there's a brook that runs right behind my house and that brook is running. What do they intend to do with that, that water in that brook and how are they going to divert that? Where are they going to, where are they going to send it? And also, I would like to see a fence around the backside of that property, a substantial fence.
You're saying to the south of the property?
Yes.
Backside, when you say the back?
Backside of the south of the property.
Okay.
Because I don't want the people from these apartments on my property.
Okay. I'm not saying, okay, we're going to do the fence. I'm just saying, oh...
Yeah.
And continue, please.
I mean, there's woods there, there's wetland, there's all kinds of wildlife back there. I don't really think the people should be wandering around the woods back there anyway.
Okay.
That's basically my, my, as far as putting gas in there, I'll tell you, good luck because when, when they modified the road there on, on Locke and Barrett and Dupre, all of that, I, I went after the gas company. I tried to get them to bring gas in there from South Road, right down the dirt road that connects directly out to freshwater. And it was like talking to myself. I mean, they didn't, they didn't want to hear it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, as far as bringing the gas in there, maybe they could do it. I don't know. I couldn't do it because I would have hooked up the gas if they would have done that, but they, they wouldn't, they didn't want to know.
That's unfortunate.
I know the gas stops right at freshwater. The gas line stops there, so I don't know. But I, I would like to see a fence in the back of that property because I don't want these people on my property.
So when the applicants come back up, we'll have them come back up and they can probably respond to your concerns. And then I'll have you come back up as well. I'll have a second round if that's good. That's, okay.
That's fine.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that would like to come up for the first round, please?
Can I look at the map before I start my time?
I'm going to, I'm going to start your time after you give your name and address and your, no, go ahead.
I live right there. That's the east side.
I know who you are, but you got to tell everybody else who you are. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Wayne Maynard. I'm from, I live on 137 South Wood, uh, South Road, excuse me. Welcome to the neighborhood. My question, actually I had a couple of questions and one of them had to do with the stream that was also mentioned on the east side of that property. The second stream runs, there's a, on the north side that runs from west, east, excuse me, to west. I want to know what they're going to do with that. The other problem that I had was, or the other questions I had were, um, some of that land is still like very, very swampy and I'm somewhat concerned over, I don't know if anybody remembers the houses across the street from the library that had porches put on the back of them. And the porches, the foundation of the porches were just the foundation length of 32 inches down. They didn't go down to the bedrock. And what happened to those porches, they were lost. They sank. So I want to know if those buildings are going to go down to the, the foundations to those buildings, especially those on the east side are going to go down to the bedrock so they don't sink. Because I don't want them to be sunk and then we have this. Another one of my questions was, uh, the traffic. You're adding 260 units or 270 units, correct?
Not a back and forth. They'll, they'll respond to your question.
But, right. But there's a trap, there's already traffic going down Alamo from other neighborhoods.
It's not my street, but...
No.
Okay.
Alamo Drive.
Yeah. I have nothing to do with it for a moment.
And there's sometimes trying to get out of there or get to the other side of South Road is virtually impossible. As my mother said, you have to be born on the other side of the street to get there. Uh, and so that was, are we going to put a traffic light on the end of Alamo as well as the end of freshwater? So...
So those are your, anything else?
Um...
You still have a...
Yes.
Five seconds.
And I was, it goes back to the traffic on freshwater and when they're, where they come out on, to freshwater, are they going to have a right turn on red? Because if they do, the only break really that, uh, trying to get up from Alamo onto South is the break from the traffic light. And if they have right on red and people are coming out of there, you're never going to get out of Alamo without something like that. Uh, and let's see. The swamps.
Don't worry if you don't remember, I'll give you a second time.
Oh, yeah, the pool on the, on the east side of the property, which is at the bottom, is basically, there's a lot of swamp area down that way. And I was wondering if anybody took that into consideration because of the water running underneath the pool. Could wash that pool and the clubhouse.
So that's your three minutes, uh, time, but I'll give you another opportunity to come back up.
No problem.
Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak in favor or against this? In favor or against? Or in the middle?
Just...
Your name and address for the record, please.
139 South Road, Enfield, Connecticut. I just have clarifica, clarification questions. It's, was supposed to be elderly housing and then it's switched to just, you know, apartments for anybody. But I looked up what, um, what do you call it? Flexible living was and it all, and everything says low income housing. I just want to make sure that this does not turn into a low income housing establishment. And I missed, is it one, two and three bedroom apartments or is it just one and two bedroom apartments that are going to be there? And I thought it was a gradual, um, a gradual stepping down of the size of the apartments, but then I also heard you say they're all three stories. So I want to know, are they all three stories high with balconies and everything? Or was it the, I thought they said towards South Road they were high, but then they gradually went down. Maybe I misunderstood. I don't, I don't know. So I wanted that clarified. And I also am very much concerned with the landscape frontage between that complex in regards to our house at 139 South Road. How much, because I know the house right next door to me, we can see, we see the deer, we see the turkeys, we see the coyote, you know, everything there. That's all going to be gone now because I would assume that's all, um, going to be dispersed. Where are those animals going? And I understand it's somebody's property. They have the right to do what they want. I'm all for that. But I just want to know what's really truly going to be there so I can make decisions, my husband and I, as to us selling.
Thank, thank you very much. Is there anybody else that'd like to come up? Name and address for the record, please.
Sean McNulty, 139 South Road. Um, I'm just, is this a done deal? I mean, that this is going to happen?
Well, this is not a back and forth. So what you need to do is say your concerns and what's on your mind. And then when, we'll, we'll get back to you.
Yeah. My concern is, like my wife said, the low income housing that probably is going to go in here, I mean, the kind of, there goes the neighborhood, you know what I mean?
Make sure you sit closer to the microphone.
Goes the neighborhood, you know what I'm saying? That's my concerns. And like I said, my house is, uh, right there and it's like I'm being forced to, to move because low income, you know, you know the deal.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Is there anybody else that would like to come up and speak for the first round? The first round of public speaking. Seeing nobody else, we'll stop the first round and we'll welcome the applicants to come back up and maybe they can address some of the citizens' concerns.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I just wanted to remind the commission that on their, on the dais this evening is a letter from Amy and Pat Sherman expressing their concerns about this application. And I will give this, my copy to...
Is that going to go in the record? I have one here.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Laurie, is this going in the record? Are you going to put it in the file?
Well, it's in the file.
Okay. Thank you. Gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So let me sort of just answer the last question first. I know there's, there was a concern about low income housing. What we call it now, of course, is affordable housing. This is a, going to be a privately developed and privately financed, um, development. So that means it's going to be market rate apartments, which means, you know, what the market will bear. It's, it's, we have no specific designs for affordable housing. Oh, I'm sorry. We have, we have no, no sufficient design for affordable housing with these units. There was also some concern about the people on South Road with regard to the landscaping. If you can see at the front of South Road, there's a fairly robust remaining area of natural vegetation. And of course, and in the back, we have that reserve of like seven acres of constant, conserved area. So we're reserving probably as much natural area as, as reasonably possible on the site with regard to that. Just trying to see, there are no three bedroom units. There are only one and two bedroom units. They are three story buildings for clarification purposes, but there are no multi-floor units, units around each floor. With regard to the concerns of traffic, and Dave could speak to it maybe more, but this is going to be a light controlled ingress and egress. So that pretty much, and it will have to be approved, I think, by DOT. But from everything we know, it's, uh, traffic control at this site by light really solves any issues with ingress and egress on the, on the South Road. And just, I don't think there's any service problem there at all.
And you had mentioned in your other statements that you've been in communication with the police department? The traffic, the traffic department?
Yeah, we went through our ART process.
Yep.
You know, ART process and, um, his major concern or comment, not really a concern, was to, with the traffic light is to introduce, uh, the appropriate pedestrian access basing into that so that people can safely cross South Road using our crosswalks, so.
And some of the comments about relative to traffic were off-site, which I don't think we have jurisdiction.
Right.
Yeah.
To mandate any, but maybe you want to talk about, you know, I don't like, it's up to you. There was something to the south. I mean, to the, to the east, the Lima Drive?
We could talk a little bit.
Yeah. There, somebody commented, how many units? It's 168, one and two bedroom units, not 268. I think that was the concern there. The first gentleman who, who's on Barrett Road, we would consider working with him to create some sort of fencing situation.
It's east side, not south side.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. For what he's meant.
For what, for his concerns there.
Which would be here, Mr. Chairman, if I get my, my little area.
Yeah, right, right in there.
And that area there.
Yeah.
So probably look at some sort of a barrier fence of some sort, you know, panel fence or something of that nature.
Possibly can you do something with the emergency entrance and incorporate it into that maybe?
It's possible. I think we probably...
You're going to be working in that area, right?
Yeah.
Maybe even have a meeting between now and next month, you know, with, with the owner.
Talk to the homeowner and see what, you know, what, what works best and what's feasible. There, there was some concern about running streams in that area. I don't think we're touching any, any...
No, actually, just to break, this, this, really the coloring here is, is a little, a little deceiving because this is not grass. This, this is going to stay wooded. Uh, the wood, the wood, we're only going back about 25 feet behind these, these units because there is a major stream that goes right through this area right here. And then it goes through a set of culverts under South Road and then continues up freshwater Boulevard, you know, eventually works its way up into the shopping areas. It's aiming towards freshwater brook.
And then it floods everything else. It doesn't flood there, it floods up here.
So that, this area is not going to be disturbed because that's, that's the, one of the brooks that one of the folks was talking about. The other one is in the back over here around the outside of us. And again, this is not grass. This is going to remain trees. The grass is the, is the, or...
Lighter yellow. Lighter green. Yeah, I'm sorry.
So that this brook comes in around this way here and then goes up here and then follows, that's why there's tree lines here. That's where the brook is. The brook is out here. It crosses under the driveway here and then eventually goes again back under South Road and, and goes along the highway system, you know, back to freshwater brook. So we're not interfering with the natural flow of these two brooks at all. That was one of the big concerns of the Wetlands Commission. So I don't see any impact there.
Just excuse me for a second. That's what I wanted to add too. And you just heard applicants mention Wetlands Commission. So you have a Wetlands approval.
Yes.
So anything with the water and brooks and streams would have been addressed at Wetlands. It really doesn't have, come under planning and zoning. So I don't know if you guys had an opportunity to voice your concerns at Wetlands, but they've been approved for Wetlands Commission. And they would have looked at those brooks then.
And as I remember, we're, we're not touching those as part of the application at all in Wetlands.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's a little deceiving the way this is colored because they're in wooded areas and they're going to remain in wooded areas. Then it's, and just back a little bit to, to traffic. I mean, we had, uh, 70% or so of the traffic either going north on freshwater Boulevard or, you know, back up to Enfield Street with very little traffic making a right-hand turn here. And this light, again, will be upgraded, you know, to modern day standards. It's kind of a tired light right now.
So maybe you can elaborate a little bit on modern day standards, push button crosswalks, cameras?
Push-button crosswalks, you know, this activation by cameras and things so that lights don't go off for no reason. If there's no vehicles in our driveway, if there's no vehicles in Freshwater Boulevard, then the light won't turn just randomly, you know, that type of thing. So all in all, I don't really see, you know, there's, is there traffic? And do people probably drive too fast on South Road? Yeah, probably. As far as from a safety perspective, I think we've got that covered.
Is there anything, open, any open issues that you heard from the residents that you need to address at this point?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
There was the one question about the buffer between the gentleman's property.
He addressed that, Barrett, at the end of Barrett?
Yeah.
He's going to do, they're going to talk to him about fencing?
But he wanted to know the distance, if they knew that, like in feet, so.
Yeah, I mean, if this is 40, I'm not sure if this is 45, if it is, but their, their would, their buffer on their side, obviously, we're not touching. And then, again, this is, this, these are trees. This is not grass along here that we're, that we're going to be keeping. So, you know, I don't know exactly what this distance is, but it's probably something in the order of 50 feet or 60 feet.
What, there now, trees? It's lined with trees there?
Yeah, and this, this driveway here really is a fire lane.
Right.
So it's going to be very little traffic on that road. It was put there, you know, at the request of the fire department.
We've had that in previous applications, those emergency gates.
It's always been there. And that's why we turn these buildings, you know, perpendicular to the neighborhood. So they're actually looking at a side that's reasonably the same width of their house, you know? And the length is pointing to the west, so.
So the balconies are all on the north and south side?
North and south.
Right.
Yeah, so this, these are, you know, these are quiet walls or dead walls, whatever you want to call them, facing the neighborhood. And we did that specifically to, to address that concern.
Yep. Okay. So at this point, I'm going to allow the public to come up and speak for a second time, if you would. Thank you, gentlemen. For the second round of public speaking, is there anybody that would like to come up and address the commission?
Edward.
Sure, sir, come on up. Again, please, your name and address for the record.
My name is Fred Bellinger. I'm 43 Barrett Road, and I'm a butter in this property. So about this brook, I kind of disagree with this man because I live right about here. And my property goes back quite a ways. I mean, I have woods behind my house. But the brook kind of runs like right through here. It runs around here and right, well, I'm not getting the pointer right, but it basically runs right through where they're building. I don't know. I mean, these are, these are substantial buildings they're going to build. You're talking a three-story building with a full attic. You're talking a 40-foot-high building. These are going to be pretty good-sized buildings. I don't know. It just doesn't seem like the right place to do that, but I'm not really objecting to them putting, putting the thing on South Road there because, I mean, I know sooner or later they're going to be building something there. And it's, it's fine to do that, but I mean, I, I really, this, this brook is, it runs. I mean, I don't know, I know this, this went through the wetlands already, and I don't know if anybody's been out there, but I mean, I live there and I've walked this whole property. And it, it's sort of, this, this brook runs right here. And it sort of goes like, just like that, through the woods, you know? And I don't know. But anyway, my concern is basically the people that are living there, I don't really want them on my property and I want a fence in the back of my property.
Well, you heard them say that they were going to be addressing that.
I'll speak with him about it. But, well, that's my basic concern, but I, I really, I don't know about the water there. I mean, like I say, that brook runs there. I mean, and it, it doesn't exactly go way around the way he showed it. He showed it going around, you know, like around here. It actually kind of goes like right through here, you know? And it goes like underneath Pasco's driveway there, you know, in the back, but I don't know, that's my concern.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you for participating. Is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak? Come on up. Again, name and address for the record, please.
My name is Wayne Maynard. I live at 137 South Road. My concern with the traffic is not so much where it comes out on Freshwater, but again, the intersection of a limo and south. I dare somebody to come out there and, you know, especially like during rush hour, and try to get across the street. I mean, as it is now, and you're going to add 200 and whatever units that are going to be coming. And so that's why I asked about the right turn-on-red sign, or do not turn-on-red sign. My other question was, when, when would you concede, or when would you anticipate breaking ground on this project? Or when, one day?
We'll get an answer from them on that. I couldn't tell you. As far as.
I'm not asking you.
I'll just respond to the traffic again. And I asked them, they went through the traffic division of the Enfield Police Department, which added their comments, and so that's been addressed.
Thank you.
To our exception, because that's what we go by. We go by what the PD tells, you know, says and suggests.
I didn't see them counting cars and on those, that intersection, I'm sorry. And I live on that intersection.
Any more public communications or comments?
You already asked what was groundbreaking.
You all set? Everybody's, okay. Well, have the applicants come back up?
Mr. Chairman, Dave Ziyex, again. I'm listening to what they're saying about a limo drive, and I'm going to think about that one because there are situations where we do put no turn-on reds. You have to have specific reasons for doing that. This one sounds like a good one, so. We don't have, I don't think we're going to have a lot of tenants wanting to make that turn anyhow. So, but we'll talk about that with the police division and the engineering division, see if it's appropriate or not.
Okay. Mr. Maynard, he just answered your question? Okay.
It's, it's hard to give you a start date without an approval or even contemplate how we're going to approach it once we get an approval, so.
Okay.
As soon as possible, right?
Yeah.
As soon as practical, but it's hard to know.
Okay.
There's a lot of factors.
Yeah, I mean, we have to go through the OSTA process after you. And then we also have to file for our general stormwater permit from DEP to start construction, so.
So you might have not heard, they didn't respond to start date. They're not yet ready. And they're, they really don't know until their process of approvals are done. So they can't give you a date at this time. Whoa, do I have to stop talking, or is that what I was? So, okay, I think, I think we've covered everything. We had two rounds of public speaking, and I appreciate the public neighbors and butters for coming out tonight. Hopefully, you got the answers that you needed, and this public hearing will stay open and you're welcome to come back again next time. So is there a motion to keep the, oh, sorry.
One thing, one thing first.
Sure.
Laurie, the letter that we have here, I saw you gave the attorney a copy of it.
Yeah.
Now, that's going to be part of the, not just the file, but part of the public hearing?
That is correct.
Okay.
It's part of the record.
Without me having to read it.
And it's in the file.
Okay.
And it will be on, on the next meeting packet, so.
Okay. Commissioner D'Antonio has something. Is it for the applicant or for Laurie?
Both. So for Laurie, or for staff through the chair, is there anything we can do going, as far as the, the regulations that require gas service? Is there anything we can do to provide them a little more flexibility if that's infeasible and the, doing all-electric is, you know, the best solution for them? Which, I mean, for what it's worth, I, I am in favor of. I think it's, it's, they've come a long way with electric heat. We have electric heat at our house with, with heat pump system. And we've seen past projects be all-electric as well. So I'm just wondering, you know, if that was something the applicant wanted to consider, is there anything that we could do as far as a condition to allow it, you know, based on?
Excuse me, Laurie, I think he's addressing this to you.
Yeah.
Might be a modification or variance. If it's in our regulation, I don't know, we'll have to see what staff says.
Sorry, I have to get to the section. My suggestion from the applicant's standpoint is we can, we can live with the requirement now, but if we felt that electric was going to be the way to go, we'd probably come back and ask you to consider modifying your regulation so it's gas or electric maybe, and then imposing that, you know, granting us that condition. So there's a reason to slow it down because we think gas is available.
Gas is definitely available.
But if it looks like, you know, electric would be more preferable for, for whatever reasons, happy to work with staff and the commission to sort of modify.
I think that, you know, the issue the gentleman had about extending the gas is not going to be an issue because he was asking the gas company to pay for it. You guys are going to pay for it, so. They'll love you, they'll love you for extending their main.
Right.
And so that, sir, that's why they wouldn't do it because they didn't want to go for the expense. These gentlemen extend their gas line, they're going to be doing it out of their dime.
Right. The, you can extend infrastructure generally if you're willing to pay for it.
Right.
You're happy to do it.
But the gas company is not going to do it, and that's the reason why.
Yeah.
But they could have picked up about 300 customers in that area.
Doesn't make sense. I agree with you.
They don't care.
They don't, it doesn't make sense.
But I do understand, I just, I, I definitely don't want to take any more time, but I just want to, you know, if we could possibly save time down the line with like an extra line here.
Right.
Well, you, you're probably, excuse me, I mean, we probably, when I say we collectively, you're probably going to want to change any of those provisions in your regulations regarding energy right now because it was written at a time when that was, you know, that was where society and we were all going. But now, it may be impossible to provide gas service just because it's beyond the capabilities of anybody here in town, you know? But for now, I think Paul's good, smart, we'll take the approval with gas. We may go with gas, I don't know, it's also when the evaluation is done. Or if not, maybe we'll work with staff and.
I think Laurie has something to answer, Mr. D'Antonio, on variants or on the gas or, Laurie, please?
Yeah, so the regulation actually says the development shall be connected to public water and public sewer and shall have gas service if a gas line is adjacent to the site and available to the site, which it is. So in order to not have that, either we need a text, the applicant or the town could do a text amendment, or they could seek a variance.
So they get, that can come further in the process.
It says shall. We can't change that. I mean, I mean, you can't approve it without it, otherwise.
Because it's shall.
It's, it's shall.
I think Commissioner Vinnie has something.
Yeah, just, I don't think we could approve that either. You're forcing people to use electricity at that point. You're forcing them, which is way more money than gas. Leave it alone. You're forcing people to use electricity, just like they're trying to force people to get electric cars. Leave it alone. It's not good. Please.
Well, that's what the regulator, Laurie's explained it. It's shall, and we are almost going to be in the process of redoing our regs, so thank you for that input.
Yeah.
It's, yeah. Not in time for you, but we'll, maybe your next project.
Mr. Sheriff, I just reply.
Go ahead.
I, I'm suggesting we leave it open to the applicant for them to best determine what works for their side.
We can't.
I know, we can't, but that's what I was suggesting. I'm not saying we require them.
Okay, yeah, leave it.
To do electric, because our regulations require gas. Our regulations take away the choice of the applicant. So I'm proposing we give them the choice. But understood, we cannot.
Right.
But I just wanted to clarify.
It's those shals and mays.
Exactly.
And she said it's a shal and not a may, so.
It's a shal.
Shals and, those guys live on shals and mays. Or may-nots.
Or may-nots.
Okay, so is there a motion to table this or extend it?
So moved.
Seconded by, seconded by Vinnie, motion made by Commissioner Olinsky to table this, extend it, whatever reward you want to use to.
Continue.
Continue. There you go, thank you. To the next regular meeting, gentlemen, is that okay with you guys? All right?
Next regular meeting is May 9th, I think.
May 9th, oh, wow, that's at the end of April. I'm thinking.
Today's the 25th.
Should work.
Good. Friday.
All righty. So we will see you guys at the next meeting.
Thank you all.
And for the public, your next meeting is May 9th.
May 9th.
Thank you.
All right.
Sure. You, yeah, go ahead, you can run them. All right. We'll just take a second and let the room clear up.
Pops right off under.
Yeah, that's the new system, isn't it?
It's all over here. Yeah, yeah, no, it's great, it's great. I've been moving stuff around.
Okay, gentlemen. Okay, old business, SPR 1931. Rick, are you going to update us on that?
Well, I could give you a quick update that we haven't received any information yet.
After, after all that, two weeks ago, you hadn't?
We're working on it.
He's working on it?
And Rick might.
You weren't here, so anything you could add a lot two weeks ago?
Well, I can, I can just tell you that he is accurate.
This is the Potter Hollow Brewery.
So he's accurate in saying that he's had a building permit in since September. The issue has been, continuing issue, that he needs approval by this board for those changes. And it's not so much that it's, and it came about from the issues with the patio and the requirements under that approval. And that expanded out to us finding out that the whole interior had been changed. The last approved interior diagram was when it first came in, I think, 2014. And building had no idea that it had changed and morphed into, from 48 to now 79 for capacity, plus the, you know, the capacity now that during the summertime for the outside patio. So that's how we got to where we're at. It's, it's not that the building department hasn't been looking at those plans, it's simply that he needs an approval, which he never got. He made those changes without anybody's approval. So that just got it, added into the cease and desist, and the cease and desist was to get him to move forward and get him before you for the approval and to have a valid permitted location that was compliant with the zoning regulations. So that and any other, a lot of things could actually go in with building permits that turn up before you simply because they needed approval as opposed to you doing the approval first. So that's kind of where we stand right now. I did have a conversation with the actual property owner who came in today, and he is going over, he claims by the end of next week that he will have a, a site plan with those parking spaces allocated to the different uses and square footage of the other buildings.
And I think that's what he was leaning on, saying, I don't know what the other building, the other uses are going to be, how do I know my parking is?
Well, it's been.
That'll be helpful.
It's been going on for a long time with the actual new property owner anyways, so we've been in touch with him several times and we've urged him because we don't know what's in there right now. There are some locations that do have tenants. We're not sure exactly what they are, and it's kind of the same thing they've done some things to that building's not aware of, or hasn't been aware of, but they're being enlightened now, so.
So we were very cordial to the brewery last, two weeks ago. We, I offered them the maximum extension. I think we're only going to do it a piece at a time, but, and also advised them to see staff and, you know, start the process with you guys. So right now, he's under extension, so does that stop the cease and desist, or does that continue?
He received a 30-day extension, so.
We gave him 30, right?
Yeah. So, so he'll be in at the next meeting, and he obviously is working with the owner, so.
And relative to the cease and desist, does that, does that hold?
The cease and desist was, was a motivator, basically, to get him into here. So once he's got the application in, basically, he's satisfying the cease and desist.
Okay. Very good. Any questions for Rick on what we heard two weeks ago at the last meeting on the Potter Hollow Brewery? Please, Walter.
All right, so I wasn't here two weeks ago, but I did watch the meeting.
Can I just interrupt for a second? I want to just put it record that Commissioner Petronella has rejoined us. He had recused himself prior application. Excuse me, Walter, I'm sorry.
No problem. So am I understanding that he moved some equipment from the first floor to the second, to the basement? Is that what I understood in the last two weeks ago meeting?
Yes, which is okay.
Which is okay. He did not need any permits for that.
He may have needed permits from building, but that I don't know.
Because he didn't move any walls or nothing, he just moved equipment.
No, that's not correct. What took place was if you look at the diagram for 2014, you will see that half of that building was the brewery.
Right.
That's what was approved. The brewery was removed from there, I think they moved over to South, not South Road, Post, Post Road or Post Office Road. And that's where the brewery was for a number of years. The interior where the original brewery was got turned into a bar in a seating area, and a portion of it is now a cooler where they, they keep the kegs for the taps.
So they moved walls around or whatever without any permits?
Right, and they expanded. It went from, because of the expansion, it went from 48, I think, for an occupancy, it went up to 79 for the interior.
That was just my clarification, that's all.
Yeah, they did, they did do interior changes.
Okay. Because the way, because the way I made it sound like it was that they moved equipment to the basement.
They did.
The only thing moved into the basement are the, are some wine containers and boxes of wine, bottled wine.
But those don't need, you didn't need a permit or anyone to inspect that.
No, that had nothing really to do with it. It was the expansion on the first floor for patrons.
Okay, because that's where I was, I just, when I heard it was equipment moving, well, I moved equipment for 30 years to, you know, every different cells, and I never had anyone come in. I mean, but, but moving walls and stuff, yes, that's a different story, but.
So I believe it all occurred after, after this commission approved them to have their wine permit there and still allowed them to sell the beer even though it was not being manufactured on the site.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
Anything else on Potter Hollow Brewery? Okay. Let's see. So next we have new business. Is there any new business?
Not this evening.
I don't hear any new business, any other business?
Not that I know of.
Other business? Opportunities and unresolved issues?
Nope.
Ain't none. Executive session, so, A, report, no votes, we're taking an executive session, and we have a motion for a text amendment.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion that staff prepare and file an application by the town regarding elderly housing in HR 33 Zone for a text amendment to the town zoning regulations identical to that text amendment languished used by the applicant in PH number 3088ZA with the sole exception of the following changes, delete parking two spaces per studio or two-bedroom unit, and add parking one space per studio or one bedroom unit, and that it be reviewed and approved by the office of the town attorney.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Olinsky, discussion on the motion. Any discussion on the motion? No discussion on a motion, roll call vote, please, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, Frank Alamo.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Ken Holinsky.
Four.
Vincent Gerlo.
Four.
Joseph Muley.
Four.
Terrence Lynch.
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Next item on the agenda, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? No discussion? We're adjourned.